I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, October 25, 2022, at 7:46 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy and Alderwoman Gloria Timmons will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and the greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. If you're participating via Zoom, please state your presence, reason for not attending the meeting in person, and whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting which is required under the right to know law.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Klee.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Present.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Juddi.
Here.
Alderman Clemens.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I am here. I am participating via Zoom due to illness, and there is no one in the room with me.
Alderman Como.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I am here. I am still isolating after having COVID, and I am alone in the room.
Alderman Gueye.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
I am here.
You have 14 present, one absent.
Thank you. Also with us this evening is Mayor Jim Donches. Mayor Donches, did you want to introduce Ms. Brown?
Ms. Brown, yes. So on your agenda, Madam President, is a presentation by Energy Manager Doria Brown. She has been asked and is going to report on energy savings that are resulting from energy contracts which she recommended and which we then adopted some time ago and which will result in very significant savings this year and next. And the one after that, too. So thank you very much.
So I was hoping to share my screen via Zoom, but I don't see the TV's working, so.
Yeah.
Here we go. So hello, my name is Doria Brown. I'm the Energy Manager for the City of Nashua, and I'm in the Sustainability Department, which just started this summer. A lot of people wondered when I say I'm the Energy Manager for the City of Nashua, what does the Energy Manager do? And an Energy Manager facilitates energy conservation by identifying and implementing various options for saving energy, managing the energy portfolio, leading awareness programs, and monitoring energy consumption. So what are we talking about today? Today, we're going to talk about the rising cost of electricity and what that means for the city in future budgets and for residents as they budget for their own energy. So I have a little outline here. I don't think it's that significant, so I'm going to skip to the next slide. So electricity prices are going up. If you pay your energy bill or your electric bill, you know that energy prices have gone up significantly. Here I have a chart of ever-source default supply rate from 2015 to 2022, and we can see that energy, for the most part, from 2015 to 2019, kind of stayed around the same rate. People were paying between maybe nine cents and at a high 12 cents per kilowatt hour on the supply side, not including delivery fees from ever-source. In 2020, we saw an extreme dip in electricity prices. We saw that go to seven cents per kilowatt hour on the ever-source default rate, and in 2021, we saw a significant increase to 11 cents. And in 2022, we are seeing a price of 22 cents per kilowatt hour, which is a lot of money, and that doesn't even include the delivery costs for electricity. Here I have a chart that was created by the PUC showing what their estimated increase in electricity rates would be from 2019 to 2029. So these rates, you see that 18 cents going all the way to 20 cents at that 1%, those include delivery fees. The rate underneath, that 22.6 cents, does not include delivery fees. So we're seeing a 112% increase in electricity supply alone this year. So that is incredibly significant. It's something that I definitely didn't predict for this year. A lot of people didn't predict it, and we're seeing just the highest energy prices I think most of us have ever seen in our lifetime. So what does that mean? How can we mitigate it? So let's talk about ISO New England. New Hampshire is a part of ISO New England, and that allows customers to participate in competitive electric markets. So you can choose a third-party supplier, and a third-party supplier is a person that -- not a person, a company or a group that buys energy in bulk off of the wholesale market, and then they sell that energy at a higher rate to their customers to mitigate their risk and earn a profit. For example, if I were to buy electricity on the wholesale market right now, I can buy electricity between maybe seven cents or eight cents per kilowatt hour, but I am incurring a risk there because tomorrow we could have a polar vortex, and that energy price can go up to 30 cents per kilowatt hour within a day. So you could be spending a lot of money quickly that you didn't budget for. So locking in a third-party supply contract mitigates your risk and insulates you from fluctuation on the wholesale electricity market. That is how ever-source buys their electricity and a lot of very large companies in New Hampshire and most municipalities. Though I have seen people play their hands at the wholesale market and have done it before myself, and it's definitely an adventure and sometimes delivers savings and sometimes does not. The city participates in third-party supply contracts, and that's what I would like to talk to everyone about today. So we have two third-party supply contracts for electricity. Our first contract is with Constellation, and it's at 5.9 cents per kilowatt hour. The contract started in 2020 and it ends in December 2024. This contract was negotiated when ever-source rates were around seven cents, so it was about two cents under market rate at the time. Currently, the contract sits 17 cents under market rate. Nashua also has a contract with EDF, and that's currently sitting at 5.9 cents per kilowatt hour. This contract starts November 2022 and ends December 2024. This contract was negotiated when ever-source's rates were at 22.9 cents per kilowatt hour and is seven cents under market rate. So let's talk about the projected savings from these contracts. So the Constellation contract accounts for our energy portfolio of 7.9 million kilowatt hours. That includes the wastewater treatment plant. The current cost for that contract this year should be, just for supply costs, should be $465,000. And if we were to be at the ever-source rate for that portion of the portfolio, we would be paying $1.8 million. So the projected savings for that contract between 2022 and 2023 is about $1.3 million. Our EDF contract is a little bit less in portfolio than our Constellation contract, but that accounts for 3.8 million kilowatt hours. The current cost for that contract is 15.9 cents, and we're expected to be paying $619,000 for supply costs, not including delivery. That would cost about $888,000 on the default ever-source rate right now. The projected savings for that contract this year is $268,000. Together, total projected savings for the next year is $1.6 million. So in working with third parties and getting access to these contracts, the city would be saving $1.6 million this year, and we are insulating ourselves from excess costs for the next two years since these contracts end in 2024. This is something that the city is very fortunate to be able to have done at the right time. That 5.9 cent contract was negotiated for in March of 2020. Rates were incredibly low. People were like, I've never seen this before in my life. And then that time, the next year, rates were incredibly high. I think they were at 14 cents per kilowatt hour. So within a year, the market just completely changed. And then this year, we saw rates increase even more because of conflicts overseas. And if those conflicts continue, we're going to continue to see these rates increase. So when these contracts end in 2024, we will probably experience higher prices than we're paying now. So it's important to think about that as we get to budget season. Another thing I wanted to talk about is community power. So the City of Nashua, we've worked on our third-party contracts, but the average resident in Nashua doesn't either know that that exists or they have tried to negotiate for a supply contract, and it's just a few cents under ever-source market rate. But as you can see, with a portfolio of 3.9 million kilowatt hours, Nashua was able to negotiate for a contract at seven cents under market rate. So in Nashua, we have 48,000 electric utility accounts between all of our residents and businesses. With community power, if all these accounts were to go out and negotiate together, they would be able to get lower prices like we have been able to take advantage of as a city. So a community power program allows for everyone to band together to buy electricity and at a lower rate hopefully than the ever-source default rate. Launching a community power program should bring significant savings to residents who would otherwise have to negotiate individually. We are seeing more and more homeowners and businesses look into third-party supply contracts, especially after this August, when prices went up to that 22 cents per kilowatt hour. And we're also seeing more people look into renewable energy projects in Nashua as well. Here I have a nice chart showing the amount of solar permits that have been filed for in Nashua. You can see in January, we started off pretty slow, but if you look at August, when electricity rates soared to that 22 cents, you see people looking into solar projects and applying for permits go straight up as well. This year, we have 197 permits so far for solar. Last year, there were only 41 permits for solar. So we're seeing more people take an interest in renewable energy and doing something about their rising cost of electricity in Nashua. So a community power program would be a nice complement for that, especially for people who don't have access to the funds to buy solar or live in an apartment, or maybe their home isn't viable. So what can we expect next? Electricity prices will continue to go up. We have to get ready for 2024 when both of our cities' contracts expire. We will likely see a big increase in rates for the Constellation contract for FY 2025, and we should prepare for that across all departments. Specifically, the wastewater treatment plant is at that 5 cent per kilowatt hour, and that uses, I think, about 5.9 million kilowatt hours every year on its own. So we're going to see that price increase from 5.9 cents per kilowatt hour to upmost of maybe 20, 22 cents where we're at now if prices continue to get higher, which they're projected to. There are potential solutions. It's not all doom and gloom. So Nashua is one of the only communities, if not the only community in New Hampshire that has their own hydroelectric dams. Nashua's hydroinsulations have the potential to generate 5 million kilowatt hours per year. That's significant. That's enough to offset the wastewater treatment plant. Group metering these dams with the city's energy portfolio or selling them into a community power pool could help insulate the city from rising energy prices in 2024. And there's also a ton of other solutions we can look into between now and when we're going to see both of those contracts go up. There is opportunity for solar, like you saw on the library. That is a big roof. That can make a lot of electricity. There are opportunities to maybe look into how we use our landfill gas-to-energy energy, and if we can buy energy from that as well. There are ways to help insulate us from energy costs going up, and the best way to do that is through energy efficiency projects and investing in renewable and clean energy that is here in our community. Another thing that we have to talk about, which I didn't want to get into today because I don't know what these prices are going to be, but in January, I'd like to come back to the Board of Aldermen and talk specifically about natural gas. The city's third and the schools' third-party contracts for natural gas are up this spring, and I would like to provide some price projections as we start thinking about next year's budget. So I'll be back. I promise. And I would like to open the floor for questions.
Thank you. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. So before August came, I was pushing in here for people to go to a third-party supplier because I work for ever-source, so I knew it was going to go up, right, to 22 cents. Hopefully, people did. I finally did and got 16 cents. So in this world, 16 cents is better than paying the 22 cents. So I would say if anybody can still sign up, I think my mother-in-law signed up for about 18 cents, anything you can take off of there is better. Actually, I just heard the national grid in mass was going to 33 cents. So, you know, we could get to those numbers at some point. I hope we don't. One thing, you know, and when people get into these contracts with third-party suppliers, they can lock in these rates for three years, two years, and hope to not have a cancellation fee if rates go down. But I think one thing that maybe the state, the city in general, we didn't do a good job. I mean, I tried to communicate it myself, but obviously statewide, I can't get it out there to really try to help people with their energy costs. There is programs at the state level that can help people. The other thing is, people don't realize, and I hear these calls every day, that, you know, they say their usage is up and they're, oh, no, no, I don't watch TV. I don't have an air conditioner on. But there's things in the house that are draining their usage. And I don't think people really understand the electricity. I mean, I didn't understand there was a delivery and a supply cost until I started working at ever-source. I just said, oh, here goes my electricity bill, I'll just pay it. And so I think there's not enough education out there for people to really find ways to bring that, their cost, down. I think solar's become huge. You saw it on the thing where people are starting to ask questions about how solar can help them, and I think a lot of people are starting to think about that as a long-term solution to things. But I think, you know, as an energy manager, I was hoping that that's something that maybe your group can start to do, finding ways to get out to the community, maybe get ever-source out here to talk about, not the bill part of it, but ways that individuals can save electricity within their own facility, whether it's a commercial building, whether it's a residential. Because it just seems like, you know, a lot of people didn't switch over to a third-party, and their bills are going to be, I see them, they're extremely high. So, and it's going to be tough going through the winter, so thank you.
So I have a few things that I'm working on with just that, so it's kind of nice that you brought that up. So I am on the EZ Board with the state, and I'm chairing the Education and Outreach Committee, and we have $400,000 to do education and outreach on energy efficiency measures and different things that people can do in the state to decrease their energy bills and take advantage of programs that will help with payment as things get harder.
Great. Thank you.
Alderwoman Klee.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you so much, Doria. I'm sorry that my word didn't come out the day that you came, but we are going to do it in December. I just have to send you a date. The questions that I have are a couple of questions of things that you mentioned. First off, all the numbers we got were without delivery.
Yes.
When we go with a third-party, is there an escalated delivery cost or supply cost versus if we stuck with ever-source? Or is it going to be the same regardless of which one?
So the delivery cost is something we cannot control.
Right.
The only people who can say no to a supply, not supply, to a delivery cost increase is the PUC. Ever-source goes to the PUC with their delivery fee, and they say, this is how much it's going to be, and the PUC either says, yes, that sounds good, or no, come back with other figures for us. The only thing that we can control as a city and as residents is how much we pay for supply. So that's what I focused on today.
Okay. So I guess my, may I ask clarification?
Yes.
So my question was that regardless of whether they went with a third-party or straight with ever-source, it's going to be the same delivery?
Yes.
That was the point I was trying to make. Thank you very much. The other question that I have, actually, I have two questions. One is that the, you mentioned about, you know, residents getting together and so on. How does the average resident get into a program such as that? Is the city offering applications to say, are you interested? Much like what we did with the solar panel thing when we said, apply, and they would try to get a lower rate depending upon how many people got in. Is the city ready at this point to get residents to come in to try to do a bulk buy, so to speak, I guess?
So the city has an aggregation committee, and we're currently working on our aggregation plan, which should be in the Board of Aldermen. I don't want to commit to this, but hopefully by the end of November, beginning of December. And after that plan is submitted, we should be able to figure out who the best vendor is to help us do a community power program, and that program will hopefully launch in the mid-spring or early summer.
Perfect. Thank you. And then just one other question. When you were talking about different ideas and so on, we've been slowly putting up solar panels in any building that we could possibly do it, all the schools, et cetera. Will this help us in the future? I know you mentioned the library, but we have to make sure that it's got a sustainable roof to be put on it. So the new schools, we're, as we're building the new schools or fixing the schools, we're putting that on it. Has doing any of that helped the city, or at this point, is it just for the school district?
Doing this has helped the city. I'm working on a report right now with the savings for the Lake Street Fire Department and for the residential garage. There are some things that I'm checking with ever-source to make sure that they're accurate before I share those numbers, but they'll go onto the Louisville-Nashua dashboard. So yes, those are helpful, and they are through power purchase agreement contracts with an impact investor. And we negotiated for rates to pay the impact investor for electricity without any delivery fees because the electricity is being generated on the building. And those rates, I think, started at like, I think, 7.6 or 7.7 cents per kilowatt hour, and every year, there's an incremental increase, and those rates are not going to get anywhere near 22 cents per kilowatt hour. So there's definitely a benefit there. Another program that will be beneficial is the microgrid on the DPW building or with the DPW building. Buying energy from the landfill gas-to-energy facility without delivery fees is going to be monumental for the city and help decrease energy prices, especially as we electrify transportation.
Before I ask my last question, I want to say what a valuable asset you are. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The other, the last question I have is the hydroelectric plants. With the state limiting how much can be generated? I know we have one that's a 5 megawatt, is that, and the other, one is a 1 megawatt, one is a 5 megawatt, but are we able to get the full benefit of?
Yes.
Both of those, even with the, I know we're the only one in the state, I believe, that has a 5 megawatt. So we are able to fully utilize it and reuse or sell that electricity? Is that correct?
So last year, we went to the legislator, and we were able to get the net metering cap increased just for municipalities. So we are able to take advantage of that metering and come up with better ways to use that electricity as a community.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And thank you for all you do.
Anyone else? Alderman Juddi.
Thank you. So this is very, very difficult news to hear. You know, we, you know, personally, I've, you know, been watching, you know, various documentaries, you know, including the, you know, a couple that Al Gore has done about the climate crisis and how we have to stop burning fossil fuels and that we should get away from using natural gas. But now, you know, the electricity costs are going up, and, you know, people are trying to survive, you know, they're looking for the cheapest way to heat their homes, and we're looking for the cheapest way to heat our schools and our public buildings. So is there, is there any, any optimism that you have for us about how we're going to be able to negotiate this climate crisis and, you know, afford to make the changes that are required?
I am incredibly optimistic because with this challenge of natural gas prices going up because of external conflict overseas, we have the opportunity to invest in renewable energy and decrease our dependence on fossil fuels to help insulate us from future costs if conflicts like this continue to happen. So this is an opportunity to invest in renewable energy and use the resources that we already have to help make the City of Nashua more sustainable and have less expensive prices as a community.
Thank you.
All set?
Thank you. Appreciate your presentation this evening.
I'll have to figure out how to get out of here, or get out of the meeting, so give me a second here.
We always, we all have that.
Thank you for having me and your time.
Thank you. We look forward to having you back.
Yep, January, hopefully with better news.
Mayor, did you want to address the board this evening?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Well, I'd like to thank Ms. Brown, Energy Manager, for all of her work as a result of entering these energy contracts some time ago. We are saving, as you just heard, $1.6 million a year for this year, next year, 2023, and calendar 2024. We are always looking for ways to save money, and electric costs are one of them. This project that I'm going to mention is a few years old now, but switching to LED lights for the streetlights, saving hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in electric costs and has been for five years or so. But Madam President, there were other, a few other things I wanted to mention. First, a very sad event. I'm sure you all read that Jerry Prunier, who had been a lawyer in Nashua for many, many years at various firms, and passed away recently following a severe stroke on the golf course. His wake was the last couple of days, and his funeral will be tomorrow. I met him when I was first beginning to run for the Board of Aldermen a long, long time ago. He'd been president of the Board of Ed before that, and I was just seeking his advice, and we became friends at that time, and I remain friends with him throughout all those years. He's known to many, many people in the community, and his family has been very involved here and in Nashua for a long time. So I just wanted to give my condolences to his family and the friends of the family of whom there is a great number. I did want to mention a couple other items, Madam President. I see that the increase in the elderly exemption is again on the agenda. I believe it will be referred to committee. I think this is a good idea and that the elderly seniors who are seeking to remain in their homes need to be given additional support. We did this the last time there was a revaluation, and as you all know, there is a state-mandated, state-ordered revaluation about, that is being implemented or has been implemented already. It's going to affect the tax rate this year because residential prices or values have gone up far more than commercial. Shifting, that will shift the burden onto residences. So the proposal made by several members of the board here, I think, is a good one, and I think that the board will ultimately adopt it. Next, a different note, I just wanted to let you know the county increased their, we just learned in the last recent days, that the county is going to increase their bill to the city by $894,000. When you put that together with the state increase in the pension costs, that's over $5 million that Nashua taxpayers have to pay as a result of state and county decisions. Finally, Madam President, I know we've got, it's a little late and there's more on the agenda, but so I will just mention that Friday, the Arlington Street Community Center is holding a Halloween party on, at the, at the center on Crown Hill on Arlington Street. That runs from 6 to 8, and also will celebrate their fifth year in operation, helping families and individuals, especially in Crown Hill, but really throughout the city. And I hope you all can, if you possibly can, can make the, make that party and see all of the good work that's being done there. So that's all I have. So, that's all I have, Madam President.
Mayor? Response to the remarks of Mayor? Alderman Dowd?
Yes, I just want to quickly add my condolences to the Prunier family. I've known Jerry and his wife Estelle and the family for decades, actually, and my thoughts and prayers go out to them.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Recognition period?
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Alderman meetings of June 28th, October 4th, October 19th, 2022, to be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons?
Communication has been received from Assistant Fire Chief William Atkinson regarding Nashville Fire Rescue's third quarter activity report. Communication has been received from Kevin Burgess, Board of Fire Commissioners Chairman, regarding fire apparatus replacement. Communication has been received from the Board of Education regarding approval of resolutions R-22-066 and R-22-068. Communication has been received from Dorothy Clark, Deputy Corporation Counsel regarding fiscal note 4022-030, increasing the elderly tax exemptions. And communication has been received from Sam Murphy, Planning Department Manager, Capital Improvements Committee Secretary, regarding Second Amendment to approved fiscal year 2023 capital improvements program.
There being no objection, I will accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment? I have only one person signed up, but we're not going to take action on that tonight. So, we will move on to communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchus regarding multi-year contract award, storage area network.
Alderman Camo?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to place on file and award the purchase of the Phase III Storage Area Network Disaster Recovery Site with new era technologies and the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-two dollars. Funding will be through Department 122 Information Technology, Fund 81342 Computer Software and Hardware slash Capital Projects by roll call.
Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Camo?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchus regarding multi-year contract award prosecutorial services.
Alderman Cleese?
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to place on file and approve the renewal of a multi-year contract engaged in providing the services of a criminal case prosecutor to the town of Hollis in the amount of two-hundred-thousand, nine-hundred-and-eight dollars and fifty cents. Year one, sixty-five thousand dollars. Year two, sixty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Year three, sixty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents. This is revenue to the city of Nashville. Madam President, I say, I ask by roll call.
You've heard the motion, discussion on that motion. Alderman Camo?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to repeat, we talked about this in the Finance Committee meeting. It's nice to be able to vote on something that brings money in once in a while.
Good point. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Camo?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries. Petitions?
None.
Dominations, appointments, and elections?
Cable Television Advisory Board, David Lisley, term to expire November 1st, 2025, 68 Bluestone Drive, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03060. Ronnie Camille, term to expire November 1st, 2025, 79 Chandler Street, number two, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03064. Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee, Laura Santir, term to expire November 1st, 2025, 18 Grasmere Lane, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03063.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I will declare the report of the July 13th Committee on Infrastructure to be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
None.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of R-22-064, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed eight-hundred-sixty-seven-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars to purchase a 2023 Pierce Aero XT Pumper Truck with associated equipment.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-22-064 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
Further motion, is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Camo?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2264 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-22-066, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed sixteen million dollars for building renovations at the Birch Hill and Main Dunstable Elementary Schools.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-22066 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on the motion? Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Alderman Jettie and I took a trip out to Main Dunstable yesterday, thanks to Sean Smith, gave us a pretty decent tour to better understand what the sixteen million dollars is going to go towards. I'll support this tonight. I wasn't really sure, you know, when you just see text on a page and you don't really understand it, it's good to kind of dig in a little bit and see what's going on. We toured the second floor of Main Dunstable. Birch Hill and Main Dunstable were basically built at the same time, same architect, they're kind of carbon copies of each other. Everything up there was open concept. No offense to anybody in the '70s, but I don't know what they were thinking in the '70s. But, anyway, it's, I think it's a good idea to do this and to enclose it and bring that school up to date, so I'll support this tonight.
Anyone else? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Camo?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2266 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-22-068, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed two million, two million dollars for school building safety improvements.
Alderman Karen?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-22-068 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Camo?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2268 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-22-069 relative to the acceptance of thirty-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars from the United States Department of Justice into police grant activity 2022 justice assistance grant, multi-jurisdictional.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-22-063 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage, discussion on that motion. Alderman Camo?
It looks like there's a typo on the L-line, but it's 069.
Yes, thank you. Duly noted. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Does the motion need to be amended, or are we good with that?
We're good with that. Thank you. Just a typo. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Camo?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2269 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances? Alderman Sullivan?
I would like to make a motion to remove from the table ordinance 022-030 by roll call.
Motion is to remove from the table. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Camo?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Second reading of O-22-030, increasing the elderly tax exemptions.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Moran, Alderman Clemmons, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. New business resolution?
Wiltshire, could you put me on there too, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
New business resolutions?
First reading of R-22-071, authorizing the mayor to enter into a third amendment to concession agreement with Granite Diamond LLC.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Add me.
Okay. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Finance Committee. New business ordinances?
First reading of O-22-031, increasing the veterans' optional in all veterans' tax credits.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Moran, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Camo, Alderman Goveya, Alderwoman Karen, Alderman Timmons, and myself. Alderman Kelly? Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
I said yes, but I don't, I was on mute. Thank you.
Okay, we'll add you.
First reading of O-22-032, authorizing stop signs on Douglas Street at its intersection with Diz Moore Street.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Cleese? Alderman O'Brien? Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of O-22-033, authorizing free holiday parking at meters in Zone 3, which includes the Elm Street and High Street parking garages from December 12th, 2022 through December 31st, 2022.
Additional sponsors?
Merry Christmas.
Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Moran, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Camo, Alderman Goveya, Alderman Karen, and myself.
Alderman Dowd?
Alderwoman Kelly.
Alderwoman Kelly and Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of O-22-034, prohibiting parking on a portion of the north side of Amherst Street.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Cleese, Alderman Goveya, Alderman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. Period for general public comment? We have one person signed up, Karen Bill.
I would ask that, if you don't interrupt me for reminders at a minute and whatever the time is, I have my own timekeeping device, and I know that you let me know when it's all done anyway. So, Karen Bill, 95 Parnell Place, Nashville, New Hampshire. I'm going to talk about the disdain that citizens of Nashville feel and are encountering when they come into this chamber to speak. It's been going on for a long time. I felt it myself, but none more than Lori Orlando. And over the last few weeks, having watched some of the meetings and having seven-to-ten-minute diatribes from people around this horseshoe during Aldermanic comment, which used to be for light, lively, appreciative comments, supportive comments, has become ugly. And it has been going on for some time. I want to call to your attention, February 17th, there was an email sent to a brand-new Alderman, and he wanted to remain anonymous, from Alderman Cleese, saying that she was afraid that Lori Orlando, she was concerned that Lori Orlando was going to burn her house down. Imagine saying that. I, excuse me, but I don't think it's very funny that you would say that about a person in a forum like this. Several months ago, Attorney Bolton called the Nashville Police to have Lori removed from City Hall, to have her arrested and do jail time because she was in the building. Absurd. Absurd. These diatribes are horrific. The behavior is inexcusable. Brian McCarthy is rolling over in his grave to see what has happened in this chamber. Where's the leadership? Over the last few weeks, there should have been several people who took a point of order when people are applauding these comments. But no. And I have to tell you, if you were not, if you're not condemning the behavior, you're condoning it. I'm ashamed that this is the way that people are treated. It is embarrassing and appalling, and I think it's bullying. Yes, bullying. It's horrific. We must always take sides. Neutrality helps the oppressor, not the victim. Silence encourages the tormentor, never the tormented. And that is from Nobel Prize laureate and Holocaust survivor Eli Beisel. I am just. I'm shocked the way this woman has been treated, that she has been arrested, that you vilify her.
Time.
And that you speak about this, and I think you should all be ashamed of yourself for allowing it.
Remarks by members of the board. I'll start over here tonight. Alderman Tevo.
Yeah, I mean. Thank you, Madam President. You know, I'm proud of this board. I think everybody on this board comes here every day to do the right things. And, you know, I don't think the public should be ashamed to come in this, into this room, and I think most aren't. It's tough when someone comes every day and just berates everybody here. And I know she has supporters on this board, yet they don't speak out. So to me, that means they don't agree either. So is it wrong to probably speak back? Yeah, we probably should be better than that. I agree a hundred percent. You know, I've done it, and there's others that have done it. We probably shouldn't speak out. Take it and move on. It's unfortunate, but I don't think one person out of ninety thousand is us holding the public in any form of disdainment. I really don't. I think all of us here, whether I disagree or agree with any of you guys, I think we don't hold the public that way. But no one likes to be constantly ridiculed, and eventually someone snaps. And, I mean, you can only push people so far sometimes, and I think that's what's been happening, and I hope it goes away, and I hope we're able to move on to things that we've been doing lately, which I think has been a lot of good things, proving a lot of things that are going to help the city. You know, and I appreciate everybody that's here that does the work, which is everybody, by the way. I wasn't calling out anyone. Just two other quick things. Happy Diwali to the Indian community. I know what's going on right now. Certainly important in my ward is I have a big population that celebrate it, so I just wanted to put that out there. And my thoughts go out to Attorney Prunier's family as well. I just met him last year. We've been, you know, we work together on things. We've been adversarial over the last year with regards to some of the properties that he's been supporting. And, you know, he was always a kind guy, always nice to talk to. And, you know, I appreciate the short relationship we've had over the last year. And, you know, it was terrible to see in the paper. I was completely shocked when I saw it. And my thoughts go out to his family, and that's it. Thank you.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to express my condolences to the Prunier family as well. Jerry and one of his good friends, Jeff Mazzaral, coached basketball for many years for us, and Jerry was always willing to help and be a part of this community. And I have to say that I thought his obituary was one of the nicest I've ever read from a family that worked together and did a lot of things, so that's great. Don't forget, Monday is trick or treat, so put on your favorite mask and just don't come knocking at my door. Thank you.
I'll start over here. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, just real quickly, once again, again, thoughts out to the Prunier family for their loss. The other thing is, I just want to clarify a few things relative to committee meetings. Any member of the board can attend any of the committee meetings. They can comment on whatever's being discussed and make their opinions known. They just can't vote. And when it comes to Aldermanic comments at the end of the meeting, any Alderman who's there has a right to share their comments. And, and I just want to make that known so that people understand what the rules are relative to committee meetings. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I do as well want to extend my sympathies to the Prunier family. Thank you.
Alderman Moran. Oh, Alderman Jettie, sorry. I skipped him.
Thank you, Madam President. So. And so I, I knew Jerry Prunier for over fifty years. He graduated from Boston College Law School the year that I started at Boston College Law School. And while I was in law school, I, I was lucky to get a work-study program position here with the city, clerking for the city attorney at the time, who was Arthur Gormly. And so I got to know all the lawyers in town, including, including Jerry. And, you know, I've known him over the years. He's probably the hardest working lawyer I've ever known. He was. You know, he was in his office early, and he was at these planning and zoning board meetings till late at night. In fact, the, the week before he died, we were both at a planning board meeting that went until eleven-thirty. And I remember after the meeting, he looked at me and shook his head and said, you know, this is way past my bedtime. And, and I said, yeah, Jerry, you know, you've been doing this a long time, you know, isn't, isn't it time for you to, you know, turn it over to somebody else and, and relax a bit? And he said, yeah, yeah, it probably is. And that's the last time I spoke to him. And so he was, he was a great guy, great lawyer. And when I went to his wake, they had all these pictures and memorabilia of him playing golf. And I thought to myself, when did he ever play golf? And someone said that he had a tee time at overlook at five-thirty every Saturday morning. So I didn't, I didn't even know they turned the lights on at five-thirty in the morning. But I guess that's when he played golf, before everyone else was awake. So we'll miss him. Thank you.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. This Saturday, from four-thirty to seven, Nashville's Halloween Boo Bash at Greeley Park. We're going to have haunted houses, hay rides, and at six PM, a silly scary movie at the Man Shell. Hope everyone can bring, everyone who has young children and young families and whomever, come out and enjoy the festivities. And of course, happy Halloween for this Monday.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President. And I want to give my condolences as well to the Prunier family. There, I don't think there's anyone in this city that had more knowledge of land use and probably, including the employees, than this man did. And the meeting that Alderman Jettie spoke of was the last time that I saw and spoke to him as well. There was a reason why everybody went to Jerry when they had a, a planning board or zoning board. He truly did have the, the most knowledge. And he will be missed. He'll be missed in the planning board. It won't be the same without him there. The other thing is, I want to reiterate my thanks to Doria Brown. She truly is an asset to the city. I met Doria prior to her being hired here. I was at a conference, and we just happened to share the same table. And her energy and excitement about everything was just, it was catchy. You could not help but smile as she talked and, and her enthusiasm. And I had said to her, you know, go check the city out, see what you could find. And I ran across in the hallway, and she told me she had gotten a job. And we just kept crossing every now and then. Then when I found out she had this job, I was just so excited for it. And I look forward to her having a longer career here. The other thing is, I want to, and I promise this will be the last time I say thank you to everybody for the successful River Fest that we had. It was amazing. For the first time that we had it, the amount of people that came out, the money that were, was raised for the HOI, which is the Honduras Outreach Youth Program that Alderman Lopez sponsors and so on, was wonderful. It was wonderful to introduce everybody to the concept of Nashville, New Hampshire. And I'm still finding myself sending out those little history things. I call it the War of the Townships. It really is exciting. And one of my favorite people that were there, there were a lot of them, NAACP, Hazy Ice Cream was giving away ice cream. But we also had Mr. Healy, the city clerk, was there registering voters, doing absentee voters, educating people. We had city people from Community Development, including Director Sullivan. We had people from the library that were there. It was just so exciting. And we had the historical commission there. And so they were able to talk and so on, as well as a lot of vendors that were there. I also want to remind people about the Fifty-second Annual June Karen Senior Outing, and that is on the thirteenth of November at noon time. It's a free event for those that are Nashville residents that are over sixty years old. And you can get your tickets at Parks and Rec at Greeley Park at one hundred Concord Street. You just have to show proof of residency. So if a husband and wife want to go, they both have to go to do that. And the doors are going to open at noon, but at eleven-forty for those who need assistance. So I've never been, and I am of this age, so. But I've, I've heard it's a great event, and I think more people should go out. And the last I'd heard there were still tickets available. Trick or treating is Monday, and many people refer to that. It's my favorite holiday, and that is not a lie. My husband and I, we decorate on that day with the smoke and all the ghoully things in our little, and we take it down the same day. It goes up and comes down. It takes us about eight hours to get it up, and I'm really good at getting it down in about thirty-five minutes where it sits in my garage. So those that live in my neighborhood, I hope that you will come out and check out our festivities. But I've been driving around town, and there's some pretty amazing things out there. I think it'll be a fun night, and I think it's going to be good weather. I don't want to, but I think it's supposed to be good weather. So thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I want to say, take a second to recognize Jerry Prunier and everything that he's done for the city. Small guy, small in stature. He was a mountain of a man, and I think a fixture in this city. And I think that there are a lot of businesses in this town and a lot of residents that owe a lot to him. I had the opportunity to stop by his wake with my wife earlier this afternoon. And, you know, I always kind of pause and think, you know, when my time comes, who will, who will come to me? I can assure you, it will not be around and out the door, practically down to Main Street. It seemed like that mile, just that line stretched out for miles, just to see how many people he touched. I got to know him a little bit through Rotary. I got to know him a little bit more on the lacrosse field as he wa, he came to watch his grandson's play with my son. And, and it was great. It was, it was an honor to, to know him and just, you know, see what he's done for the city, and he will be missed.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to express my condolences to, to Prunier family. And, you know, since I've been on the board, and even with my thirty-five years on the Fire Department, it was kind of hard not to know of Jerry Prunier. A lot of people do their civic service or different things, perhaps maybe even serving here in the horseshoe and stuff like that. But Mr. Prunier was a man that definitely left his thumbprints on this particular city. If you look, whether you can agree or disagree, whether we got overdeveloped or different things like that, he did a lot of positive things and made it happen. Yet we bask in the sunshine of being one of the better cities that, you know, some of the magazine companies want to, you know, that tout us to. Well, a lot of that had to do with some of the peripherals that are out there. Mr. Prunier was one of them that really made the impact here, and I'm sure he's surely going to be missed. I will miss him. So I offered their family, his family, the condolences. Next thing is, I think this is our last meeting before the ghosts and goblins and the terribles and the horribles or whatever else is going to happen. I think this holiday was started by the American Dental Association, so. So I congratulate them on it. But the thing is, it is getting dark earlier. The witching hour is about the time that you're going to be traveling, coming home, when the kids are going to be out. So parents, have your kids carry the flashlight or a little, one of those little markers. I know it's tough, but, you know. And, you know, let's keep us safe and slow down the traffic, and let's see if we can get by with a great Halloween and lots of candies. And it was an Irish holiday, to let you know, too. So, thank you.
I too would like to express my sympathy to the family of Jerry Prunier. He was an incredible guy, left quite a, quite a legacy here in the city. He was a great guy. Also would like to thank the mayor for bringing Doria Brown in tonight. She's done some incredible work in the short time she's been here, and I look forward to more incredible things from her. She's a hard worker, and she's getting it done. So thank you, Mayor. The senior outing is always a great event. I've attended several, several times, and it's a good opportunity to catch up with some of the seniors in our city, and I enjoy it. And I want to touch on the memo that I sent out earlier. I, I don't want to belabor it. All I want to say is, we can do better, and I hope we do do better. Thank you. Alderman. Oh, Alderman Kelly.
I was actually waiting for committee announcements.
Oh. Committee announcements. Alderman Kelly.
The Personnel Committee will meet next Tuesday, November first, in the Aldermanic Chamber at seven PM. We'll be discussing the Administrative Services Director.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. The Cultural Connection Committee meeting is tomorrow at Arlington Street Community Center at twelve o'clock. It's open to the public.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, tomorrow night at seven PM here in the Aldermanic Chamber. Well, that's ten-twenty-five, seven PM. Will be the Committee of Infrastructure. It's just a couple of stop signs, but we have a special guest, and Director Cummings will be here. So if stop signs aren't your thing, I'm sure Director Cummings is. Be there or be square. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, Joint Special School Building Committee this Thursday, seven PM, Nashville High North.
Okay. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the October twenty-fifth meeting of the Board of Alderman be adjourned by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tevo.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries, and we are adjourned at eight fifty-three PM. Thank you, everyone.